Good morning. Welcome to the Minnehaha County Commission meeting for July 15th, 2025. I formally call this meeting to order and note for the record that we have a full quorum of commissioners present. Before you get started, just a reminder, silence your cell phone, and please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Look for a motion to approve our agenda, please. So moved?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda has our bills that we pay, our routine business, basically, for the county. Everything's available. Public record down in the auditor's office if you want to see anything. Anybody from the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda? Commissioners, anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda or comment on it? Now, look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Haisi.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, regular business. First item is public hearing to consider a 2025-2026 retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for Fruit of the Coop. Kim, our commission recorder, take care of these licenses.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Christiansen at the auditor's office. We received an annual 25-26 retail on-off sale malt beverage and SD farm wine license application from Fruit of the Coop. The license would allow for the sale of malt beverages and SD farm wine at their establishment located within Minnehaha County. The application was reviewed by the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney's Office, and Planning Department. No questions or concerns were reported. The fee for a new license is $300 plus a $55 publishing fee. We do not have a limit on the number of these licenses that the county can issue. Half of the fee will go to the state and the remaining half of the fee, along with the publishing fee, stay within the county. If the license would be approved, it would expire at the end of next June with the regular malt beverage license renewals.
All right. Thank you, Kim. This is a public hearing. So the order we take business on this is for the proponent, typically the applicant. Is there a proponent or applicant here for the approval of this license?
Here.
Please. Good morning. We just ask that you identify yourself.
Okay, my name is Stephanie Peterson, County of Residence, Minnehaha. I'm the applicant, and I am the owner of an agritourism business called Fruit of the Coop. It's a seven-acre farm that I reside on here in the county. And we are a... We sell eggs to restaurants. We have about 10 restaurants in town that we sell to weekly, and then that's kind of how we started. And we've expanded, and we did receive an agritourism permit from the county a few years back. So we've been growing the agritourism side of our business. We do farm tours and field trips. We also have a short-term rental CUP from the county for our farm stay Airbnb, and bed and breakfast license from the South Dakota Department of Health for that as well. And we now have launched a small event space under our agritourism permit rules. So, "small" as in, I think we're allowed 60 people and 20 vehicles on the site for events. So I'm also now applying for the license for the beer and wine to kind of add to my event space. We have a number of events scheduled this year, and, you know, things like we're doing a flower workshop on the farm with another farmer who has a flower farm nearby, and we'd love to sell some beer and wine with appetizers for those types of events.
All righty. Thank you.
And I have a flyer if anybody wants to look at it, and we have a brand-new website that we launched, so we're excited.
Excellent.
I'd take a flyer.
Yeah, sure. I just brought one, so you can pass it around.
Thank you.
All right. Any other proponents for this license approval? Any opponents to the license? Okay, I'll turn it over to the commission for questions and/or action.
I would make a motion to approve the malt beverage and wine license.
Second that.
Motion in a second. I guess my only comment is congratulations on your entrepreneurial spirit. You obviously have a lot going on there, and it's... Congratulate you.
Yeah, thank you so much, and I invite you all to come out and check us out sometime. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second. Any additional comments? Call the roll, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Haisi.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, consider a motion to approve a lease agreement with Performance Plus LLC for additional public defender office space and authorize the chair to sign the lease agreement. Morning, Tracy.
Good morning. Tracy Smith, Public Defender's Office. We are seeking approval to enter into a lease agreement with Dynamic Performance Properties. Danielle and Haley Myer are here as well. We explored other options. As the commission knows, we are growing and have run out of space in the Annex Building. Before we sought this opportunity, we did explore other options, compared the cost of renovating other space, and considering other unknowns with the current pending space study that is currently being done, we felt that this was the most efficient and cost-effective option at this point. We are seeking to enter into a 36-month lease in the 300 Building. The space currently would allow us the opportunity to have, I believe it's, seven offices, two reception areas. By entering into this lease agreement, it would also allow for potential expansion as we continue to explore other options with discussing reorganization and the potential for addressing the growing concern with conflict costs for private counsel and potentially addressing the need to potentially open a third conflict office. We were able to attain furniture already for this space we've, at no cost. We thought that was going to be a big cost as well. We are able to attain any other furniture that we may need, which would just be a few chairs through our current budget for the rest of this year. And we've already explored the cost of what it would be for networking, and Monty has looked into that, which would be about $378 a month for 36 months. The rent would be $3,100 down for the deposit and then $3,100 per month, and I've included the costs for that in our... already in our 2026 budget request.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy. Any public comments on this agenda item regarding this lease agreement? All right. Commission, I'll turn it over to you for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll just make the comment that I appreciate both the Public Defender's Office, and I see Julie here too, from the public advocate, trying to get creative and strategic about how we think through partnerships and a third conflicts office, et cetera. But I think that's a conversation for another day. This is pretty much just a direct need of space. So this is just an immediate need, but it buys us the runway time and physical space to have some of those conversations and see how we can provide more efficient service down the line and keep some of the cases internal to the county rather than going to the private bar. But I'm supportive of this today. It's just a... an immediate need and lets us... is maybe the first foray into the broader master campus plan, knowing that we need more space for attorneys on this campus. So with that, I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second that, and I would also comment that during the campaign last year, I had met with Tracy, and it was quite apparent that they were running out of space. And I do have one question, Tracy. How many attorneys and support staff, paralegals, et cetera, will be moving over to the new space?
There are seven. Right now, the immediate need is for, as of August 1st, we'll need at least two, but eventually there will be seven.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. My nine years on the county commission, I've been a liaison to Tracy's office and have seen the growth, unfortunate, but part of growing county and growing community that we provide public defense as we do. People are on top of each other in that office. We got conference rooms that have three people, four people, working in a single conference room. That's not meant as an office space. We have closets that have become offices. I mean, it's... yeah, it's dire. It's not... We've put this off as long as we possibly could, and I'm supportive of... This is a short-term fix, as Commissioner Kipley had indicated. Until we can get through our campus master plan and figure out, big picture, what's going to go on, but it's what we need to do for now, so. Any other comments? All right. Call the roll, please.
Kipley.
Aye.
Haisi.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a
balancing change order between Minnehaha County and BX Civil in construction for structure... I'm sorry, MC 2306, Structure 518134. Morning, Jacob.
Morning, Commission. Jacob Morris, Highway Department. BX Civil in construction has finished up our bridge on County Highway 133, just north of the Crooks Renner exit. This is the final piece of the puzzle where we zero out the quantities for the project. The original contract amount was roughly 125,000, and this brings the contract down to 815,000.
What are those numbers again?
825 and 815.
Okay.
It was originally 825,000, and it's going down approximately 10,000 to 815,000.
Okay. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission, turn it over to you for action.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those... I'm sorry, call the roll.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Haisi.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to declare the museum's 2005 Chrysler Town and Country van, asset number 0687, a surplus for disposable... disposal by online auction. Morning, Bill.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Suland Heritage Museums. This is saying goodbye to a tried and true warrior for the museum. The 2005 Chrysler Town and Country minivan was purchased through the museum's special enterprise fund in 2006. It's long past its service life, and it's been replaced with a new Chevy van, which was just with proceeds from the museum store.
Okay. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission, turn it over to you for comments, questions, action?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Bill, a question, if I could, for you. We're going to be heading into our budget discussion here on our next agenda item, and we're going to be talking about vehicles. And I think the commission as a body likes to know that we squeezed every bit of possible life out of every vehicle that we have. You know, tell us, I mean, how many miles are on this vehicle? What's the condition? Is it needing maintenance? What's going on?
What's going on? I believe it's over 150,000 miles. It's rusting. It has some ongoing maintenance issues. The air conditioning no longer works. It's just unsightly and really a bad representation for the community. The other thing is, the van that we just purchased is somewhat larger cargo capacity, and with the addition of the Museum Resource Center in 2018, we really didn't have a vehicle for transporting artifacts that was big enough, and have had to rent trucks occasionally, and this will lessen that need for transporting large items between the buildings.
So the proceeds from any sale, do they go back into the museum fund, or is that a separate?
I think that goes back into the general fund. I don't know exactly what the practice has been.
Has the offer been put out to any other county offices if anybody wanted or needed this vehicle? Okay. I ask that because, you know, we have needs for vehicles, but, you know, just curious if anybody else would be able to salvage any... any use out of this for a year or two.
I think they'd be hard pressed to keep it going.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Additional comments or questions? All right. Call the roll.
Haisi.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, 2026 budget discussion. Start out with Tom.
Got us kicked off, yeah. Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. I'll be followed here by Carrie, then Carrie Dever, then Susan, to talk about the... some remaining items within the 26 budget. So just to look at what is going to be discussed this morning, there are a few items that staff is still looking for guidance from the commission on, particularly one personnel request, that's a position conversion, and then two vehicle requests. So we'll tee those up in a few minutes here for the commission to provide some guidance. Then Susan will come up and kind of give an overview of where we're at right now, particularly with cash applied, and also talk about some preliminary budget adjustments that have been made based on previous guidance and some new information that's been made available within the last several weeks. And then she'll finish up with a look at the budget forecast, opt-outs, our means of finance, and then again, we'll look for some commission guidance if any is needed. Just a review of where we are and where we've been at. So today is July 15th. We've already had two budget meetings. We forewent last week's planned budget meeting primarily because of the amount of work that was done during those first two meetings. One thing that we don't have up here that I just want to emphasize is the fact that you've been hearing from the department since January, a look into their overall operations and anticipated major budgetary items for the upcoming year. So good depth of analysis on all the things that are going on in the county. And certainly next week, we'll come back pending guidance from today with a request to file the provisional... the provisional budget with the auditor. That effectively would provide notice of our budget hearing for the first Tuesday in September. One other item I want to highlight there is just on August 26th. We do have three jointly administered... three joint budgets in the county that we have with the City of Sioux Falls, 911, Suland Museums, and the library system. Those will be addressed on August 26th in a joint session with the Sioux Falls City Council. So with that, I'm going to ask Carrie to come up just to tee this conversation up about the pending personnel request.
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. The slide in front of you is a summary of the staffing requests, the conversations that you had during the last budget hearing, and then also the discussion that you had on position conversions. So just as a recap, there was support for adding seven new positions in 2026, predominantly in public safety and justice. In fact, all in those areas. The commission left off with a conversation on a potential position conversion in the public advocates' office. Julie Hofer had made a request to convert an existing attorney to a senior trial attorney, and a senior trial attorney is a supervising attorney within those areas. Just as a recap for you as you consider that request, this is a breakdown of the current staffing, the State's Attorney's Office, the Public Defender's Office, and the Public Advocates' Office. So you get a sense of where their staff are at and what their leadership levels look like. Part of the conversation the commission had was if the position were approved, what would that look like for Julie's org structure? And we were asked to provide you an example of the organizational chart, both currently, which is what is in front of you right now, as well as what it would look like if that additional supervising attorney was approved. And Julie Hofer is here to talk through that structure and answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Morning, Julie.
Julie Hofer, Public Advocate. I sat down with Carrie, and we talked through the proposed organizational chart. As I discussed, I think at the last... or the last time that we met, my office, due to the size, does not have a chief deputy criminal, does not have a chief deputy civil supervisory attorney. So the supervisory attorney is me, and then I have one senior trial attorney. I'm asking for one of our current positions to be converted to the senior trial attorney, and the new organizational chart would break down exactly how that would look. I would have our current senior trial attorney who focuses on juvenile and appeal and habeas work, so the civil aspect of it. He would be supervising the A&amp;Ns, and then also doing the juvenile and the appeals and the habeases. We've tentatively approved a new position for our office. That person, I think, would be split between juveniles, so is doing some civil work, and then also between the criminal caseload. And so my proposal would be for the second senior trial attorney or supervising attorney that I'm requesting to be, I guess, in a sense, like a chief deputy criminal, to fulfill that role, to have supervisory, I guess, to supervise the attorneys doing the criminal work. And then we have our five office staff that the current senior trial attorney and I also would be responsible for. Ultimately, I'd be responsible for decisions that are made in all areas of that as well. Just as an example, I'm asking for this, one, because I think that at least one of our attorneys is taking on this role already without having that designation. They do step up to help me when I am crunched for time. I do carry pretty much a full caseload, mainly felonies. So I'm... and I thrive on that. I thrive on being busy, so I'm not... that's not a complaint at all. But what I'm looking for here is some help, someone else to depend on to fill that role. As an example, Commissioner Kipley and I had a conversation earlier this spring about the pathways program. One, I told them we didn't have space to do that, and luckily, that's been approved. We're going to get more space. But in addition to that, in it... for everything else I do, I indicated to him I just did not have time to be supervising an additional student from the law school. And although that could be a great benefit, and that person would learn a lot, just there's time constraints. And at this time, before the expansion is done, there's also building constraints as well, or space constraints. So that is why I am requesting that. I understand when you look at our numbers, we're a smaller office. I do think that we produce a quant... a great quantity and quality work. Obviously, my goal is to see that continue, and this request would be part of that.
All righty. Commission, questions of Julie on this request for staffing change? Just looking for support or consensus for support and/or not?
Mr. Chair, I can say that I support this kind of reorg of her org chart. I think it just is a... shows how the public advocate office has evolved over, what do we have, about 20 years?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years of its existence is mainly just a conflicts office, but it's getting a little more sophisticated and still handling some specialty issues. So I think splitting that off, my understanding of the office, this is going to be the most efficient structure, and I think it's somewhat acknowledging what you're already doing to a certain degree and acknowledging the effort of the attorneys involved to give them that progression. I appreciate we're not talking about a chief deputy and trying to make the argument of equity to something like the State's Attorney's Office or the Public Defender's Office that have a chief deputy.
Yes.
Because the scale of their offices just are bigger. So they're a little bit apples and oranges, but I think as to this structural change, I'm supportive.
Thank you.
Any opposition to this personnel change?
Mr. Chair, I'm generally supportive of this, but just to clarify what we're voting on, we're going to be moving up...
We won't be voting. It's just, are we going to include it in the budget or not? So...
Well, nonetheless, just a way, making sure I understand this correctly, we're going to be moving an already existing trial attorney that's already hired in your office up to a new designation, and then paying them an additional $11,499 to be in that role?
That's... that is correct. It's not a new attorney position. It's that. Thank you.
Creating a supervisory position out of an existing position?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I would just say thank you for the justification and the extra information, and also to your staff. I know they work hard and do a great job, and I'm excited to hear that maybe this would open up the opportunity for more efficiencies too, and potentially when the space is available for the pathways, those opportunities would be great to see realized. Thank you.
So, and I would comment further. I think part of this discussion, we're looking in the future as we build the new juvenile detention center, we're going to be taking on more cases, perhaps more complex cases, and I think this fits in nicely with the long-term direction of the Public Advocates' Office and the kind of cases that we're going to have to be dealing with over time, so.
So I'm not hearing any opposition to this personnel change, so we'll move forward with keeping that in the budget as presented.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item here are vehicle requests. So the red highlighted items are the two items to be addressed today. I just want to point out and remind you that the equalization vehicle would be a general fund budget item, and the bucket truck down here for highway would be a highway fund budget item. You had some questions at the last meeting. Each... both Chris Lilla and Jacob Morris are here to address each one from their respective departments. So with your approval, Chair, I'll just ask Chris to come up first. And as he's coming up, just want to remind you that the county vehicle... the county policy on vehicles is replacement to the extent possible at eight years or 150,000 miles, essentially whichever comes first. So I'll turn it over to Chris.
Morning, Commission. Chris Lilla, Equalization Director. Yeah, we've got a 2008 that our office did purchase new. The mileage on it is not in excess. We're just over 88,000 miles on that. The issue with it... and we looked to see if there was an hour meter on there, and there's not. This has been a City of Sioux Falls appraiser car, so I don't know how many hours are on this vehicle. We've already replaced the transmission in it earlier. We've gone through multiple brakes, multiple tie rods, things like that. The issue with it right now is the air is out. It... the... all the steering... The issue with it right now is the air is out, it, the, all the steering, tires, balancing, tie rods, shocks, everything in it right now is needing replaced. The estimate of what we need to have fixed on it is about $3,600. And when I looked at Kelley Blue Book, the retail value of the vehicle's about $4,600, the trade-in value's about $2,600. So I'm at a crossroads of do I put $3,600 into a vehicle to keep it on the road for a vehicle that's worth $3,600? So I, that, that's up to you. If, if, if you want to support replacing that vehicle, we will move forward with that. If not, I'm going to be forced to basically take it into the shop and have it fully repaired so that it can be on the road.
Okay. Commission, questions?
Mr. Chair, Chris, how many, how many vehicles do you have? Because it's kind of a ratio of almost every assessor has one vehicle, roughly?
Every assessor has a vehicle, yes.
Okay. So what is, just remind me than that-
Fifteen vehicles.
Fifteen vehicles. So when we're talking about a county policy where we would expect you every eight years or a certain mileage to be replacing vehicles, the fact that you have one vehicle before us this year should not be surprising?
This office, we have gotten rid of everything that was surplus to us as, as time has rolled out. So all the vehicles that we have in our possession right now, we did acquire brand-new to our office. So they've been maintained. The vehicle, as far as cosmetic and looks-wise, is fine. It's just the, it's just the meat underneath that's falling apart.
Yeah, it, maybe, it's just, it's, it's a significant enough fleet, I think maybe you could set expectations with like a kind of a five-year forecast of sorts of that, to help us understand that these are on a rolling rotation. I think the Sheriff's Office does this pretty well and has a plan. So I just, I, I'm supportive of this vehicle. I think you, you have the case to be made, and I just think that's the, the cost of doing business for having that group, having a vehicle per person and doing their work across the county. So that seems relatively simple to me, and I appreciate that, and just having an understanding of your, the scope and scale of your fleet, given the county policy of having them on a rotation. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, just out of curious, out of curiosity, Chris, how many miles per year do the vehicles typically incur? Are the other assessors out half of the day, every day of the week?
No, they're out daily. They're all, all have their designated areas and their areas of responsibility, so there, there's 15 people going 15 different directions. And the mileage varies depending on, I mean, one of the appraisers doesn't get a lot of miles on his vehicle, he's doing the cathedral area right around here. I mean, he's within a couple miles of, of this is his neighborhoods. I've got other ones that are townships that are running up to Garrettson and all over in the, in the county. So those vehicles get a lot more miles, less hours than in town, start, stop, start, stop, start, stop. So it, I, I wouldn't even have a average number for you. It, it depends. And, and over time, we've, we've shifted areas of responsibilities, and those vehicles now move to farther away or come closer. It just, it's the nature of the beast.
With, with the vehicle that we're looking at replacing with this request, is the assessor down a vehicle, or are they sharing vehicles currently?
Right now, we've been down one, but it's, it's worked out so far, because one of my appraisers was out on maternity leave, so we've had this vehicle parked for quite some time. Right now, yesterday, they had to take it out, and when they came back, they were like, I was hot in the vehicle before I even got there, because there's no air. And so they weren't too pleased, but it is what it is, because when they're all in and all out, every vehicle is taken and used, so.
So talk to us about, I mean, that's a lot of vehicles, your management or, I mean, is a vehicle assigned to an assessor? Do they schedule their own oil changes? None, none of the assessors take vehicles home with them?
No.
But, I mean, how do you, how, how do you manage that fleet?
Yeah, each appraiser has their own designated vehicle. That's beneficial for their paperwork when they go out, their building permit list, their, all of the, all the documents of their schedule, of where they're going to review, they've got all of that in there. To have to manage that back and forth and swap vehicles would be kind of a nightmare.
But what about the maintenance, managing that?
Maintenance, Duane King manages all of my maintenance logs for our office, so oil changes, things like that. He keeps that log in, in the office, and then when it's coming due, we go get those oil changes and tire rotations and things done.
And to Commissioner Kipling's point, I mean, are you looking at a rotation of vehicles out, you know, three every year, so that every five years?
I honestly hadn't been, simply because the condition of our vehicles has been pretty well-maintained.
So you can get 10 years out of a vehicle pretty easy?
Yeah, this one we bought in 2008. And, and, and I wouldn't be looking for it if it didn't need repairs equal to the value of it.
Okay.
Otherwise, otherwise, I personally don't see the need to replace vehicles just because it hit eight years, or if, if it's in good working order. I, you know, we, we push them as long as, as hard as we can.
My concern would be that, you know, I mean, four years from now, you come to us and say, I need five new vehicles, I guess, so I'm-
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Right now, they're, they're staggered pretty good in the time. I've got another one that we got in 2008 as well, but we haven't had any mechanical issues with that one. And then they kind of start stepping in, you know, every couple of years. If we were to follow that replacement plan, then we would start rolling one or two off, you know, every year, basically. But as long as they're in, in good working order, I, I guess I'm kind of a penny pincher.
Is there any opposition to including this vehicle in the budget for next year? Seeing a bunch of head shaking, no opposition, so we'll assume that we're going to include it in the budget at this point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. All right. Last vehicle is a bucket truck, and I had questions last week, or two weeks ago, about, you know, is it better to buy one, rent one? So talk to us a little bit about this, Jacob.
Yeah, good question. So we went back, talked to suppliers, suppliers, looked around town, and then talked with staff as well about actual use of the vehicle. So when it comes to dollars and cents, we could rent one. So we use the truck mainly in the winter, when we're not out plowing snow, we're out trimming trees in the right-of-way. So November, December, January, February. And then there's also some tree trimming that happens in the summer. So about five months, we use that truck out of the year. A five-month rental versus replacement, it would take us about five years to make up that cost. The existing truck, we've had almost nine years at this point, and we would expect to keep the, keep the next truck just, just as long, if not longer, depending on condition, obviously. So I think cost-benefit-wise for renting or leasing versus owning, it would definitely make sense to own it. And then from another use standpoint, we have short-term emergency responses that we have to have. The couple of trucks that we identified for renting, one was in Minneapolis and one was in Sioux City, they're, the companies in Sioux Falls don't have them for rental. The, the derecho, the snowstorms in 22, ice storms, those are all items where we have to have emergency response to the roadway. We need electrically protected bucket trucks so we can work in the right-of-way, near, around power lines, taking trees down to make sure the roads are open for the, for the traveling public. So I think those are, those are our reasons for wanting to own it and have it available 24/7.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Benning?
Well, I would say that Jacob's made a good cause and reason for having it for emergency circumstances, and a five-year turnaround in owning it versus renting it makes sense. And the other bigger issue for me is availability and having to go to Omaha or Sioux City or wherever to find one when you're in stringent times and people are waiting for your support to be able to go clear highways or rivers or whatever needs to be done. We don't want to be in a circumstance where we don't have that equipment.
All right. So I was under the impression that, you know, we could run down to one of the rental agencies here in town and rent one, but it's not that type of equipment. So I would concur with Commissioner Benning and your analysis that the purchase, just to have the truck, salvage on the other one, any idea?
Um, yeah, it's in my memo with the, with the salvage cost, salvage value for that would be, I think it's somewhere around $10,000 or $15,000.
Okay. Thank you.
I would ask a question.
Commissioner Blumberg.
Thank you, Chair. Just curious, with this type of equipment that we don't use consistently, do other counties in the area have same, similar equipment? Is there any opportunity for us? I know you work with other counties to find efficiencies. Is this a piece of equipment that somehow could be shared and possibly the cost shared?
We have definitely worked with other counties, sharing different pieces of construction equipment, crack seal machines, mastic machines. There are a lot of counties that share pavers, chip seal equipment. I would assume that Lincoln County, McCook County, Moody County have bucket trucks that they use to trim trees in the winter. That's not a piece of equipment we've discussed in the past, but I would assume if we have a major storm event response time, they would be out using that equipment. Same thing with this, we, we generally share equipment with the cities of Sioux Falls as well, and that would be the same scenario. If we are having to respond to emergency, generally, they are too.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm, I'm okay with including the bucket truck in the budget. Any opposition? Good. Yep. We're good. Thank you. All right. So that basically wraps up the open-ended items that were in the budget, personnel and equipment. So I'll let Susan complete the budget discussion.
Good morning. Susan Beaman with the Auditor's Office. We'll just run through where we are sitting with budget adjustments, and specifically on our general fund to start with. First slide that we'll go through is just an updated cash applied illustration. So with the changes that you had approved or requested that we include in the proposed budget, our projected revenues are at 88.8 million, and then total appropriations for general fund is at just over 95.6 million. That brings our cash applied to just a little bit over $12 million, which is a 12.5% cash applied rate. This includes all the, the positions you requested on the first, as well as a few other changes that have come to us that I will show you on the next slide. Historically, we've tried to keep our cash applied at an 8% target, which essentially helps us not use reserves. This, with this budget, what we are proposing is using some of the reserves that we did build up last year. So if you recall, in prior discussions, we've talked about a very strong year in 2024 where our reserves in the general fund did increase. So what we're trying to do this year is use some of those reserves to help balance this budget. As we get into the, the changes for what have happened in the budget since the original budget meeting, we've had changes to four funds. I won't go through this in all detail, but you'll see on the slide that up, the top section here is the adjustments to revenue. We've had a few just minor changes, just make some corrections on the general fund. The largest revenue adjustment is that increase to the wheel tax in the highway fund that we've discussed before. Additionally, we had a few minor adjustments on the inter-fund transfer line, as well as adjustments on the appropriations. So the, you have, we've been involved in those discussions about the salary and benefit changes related to new positions. We had a few other rounding adjustments that we had to push through, so that's included in there. The other significant changes that are included in here, we've gotten some new estimates for vehicle insurance, and so we've increased the vehicle insurance budgets accordingly. And additionally, at our last meeting, you approved the Deputy's Association Union Agreement that included some uniform, uniform allowance changes that increase the budget as well. So these are the changes that are in today's presentation. Of the ones that you just discussed, the vehicles are already included in the numbers. The change to the position for the Public Advocates Office will need to be increased in the, the provisional budget. Additionally, I have, did receive a call from our State's Attorney last Friday. He's, would like to increase his blood and alcohol testing line in his budget by 10,000, which is roughly a 14% increase. We use the state of South Dakota for those tests, and they notified us of a pricing increase. So he would like to include that, which I would like to include in next week's provisional budget. So there would be two proposed changes for next week, the 10,000 for State's Attorney and then Julie's position.
Okay.
Okay?
I don't see where we have a choice.
Okay.
Yep.
So as we get into the long-range forecast, we've seen this slide a number of times. I know we do have a few new people in, in the room, so I'll maybe just walk through very briefly what the slide is trying to do. So '26 budget is here, and what we're trying to do is look ahead five years to see where we're headed, to make sure that our reserves are stable, and that we're also planning ahead to know what's coming down the road. So with this forecast, and with our 12.5% cash applied rate this year, we talked about this line here is our cash reserves within the general fund. This slide is just general fund. So we did have a higher level of reserves in '24. That yellow line here, as it goes up, that's our 25% threshold that we want to keep our unassigned fund balance at, at that yellow line. As we've talked before, about having stable reserves is a, something to help us weather storms as it comes forward down the road, as well as maintaining adequate, adequate reserves is important for bond ratings as well. So what we want to do as we go forward is maintain a level of having this line of cash stay above that yellow line. In order to do that, with our forecast, we do have to have opt-outs in here as we move forward in the next five years. We're not proposing at this time layering or levying any new opt-outs in '26, but we don't see that as going to be happening down the road. We do think we'll need to continue levying opt-outs as we move forward in the forecast. One primary reason for that, as we've discussed in the past, remains the increasing cost for public safety and justice, which does include the expansion into the vacant floor in the jail, which we refer to as UC3. So that is baked into this, this forecast. So this has been updated with the changes from the last meeting, as well as some adjustments to opt-outs, just to balance things as we go forward.
Okay.
Okay. I don't want to go through this in detail, because I know we've talked about it at two meetings, but I think it's important, just since our next agenda item is opt-outs, just to kind of remind everybody where we are. We've talked about the building fund opt-out, that we are actually having one drop off, since that one is being related to a piece of debt that is paid off in 2025. There is no reason to replace that opt-out in '26. That is why you'll see a decrease in opt-outs in the building fund for '26. Where we do have ongoing concerns and need for opt-outs is in the general fund. We do have currently capacity for $20.1 million in opt-outs, this is the line right down here. What we are levying is $15,503,000. So that means in our general fund, we actually have the potential to levy another $4,622,000 that we are not at this time. The shaded areas are the opt-outs that still have capacity on that we have not levied, meaning we have that, that levy avail, the opt-out available, but we have not needed to use that, and we've chosen to delay implementing, implementing that opt-out and levying that opt-out at this time. And also, just as a reminder, the 2020, the 2006 opt-out of them, $1,625, Taxure 2026, that's the last year for that opt-out, and we'll have to discuss replacing that in 2027 as that opt-out drops off. I'll just pause there for any questions. I know we've talked about this in the past, but it's an important topic.
Commissioners, questions on the opt-outs?
Mr. Chair, good morning, Susan.
Good morning.
I understand that approximately 25% of the general fund are opt-outs. Do you foresee down the road that percentage increasing to say to 28, 30, 35%? Is that sort of the trajectory that we're going down? Are we trying to maintain that 25%?
Yeah. Great question. So currently, for proposed '26, I think it's a little under 25% is the amount of budget opt-outs in the general fund budget. Unfortunately, the need for, for opt-outs will continue to increase, and I do see that percentage increasing. I think we'd all like to see opt-outs being able to remain flat, but the reality is, if we levy no new opt-out and just keep it at the 15,503 for the next five years, by the end of 2031, our, our unassigned fund balance or our reserves will be zero. So special, and the primary driver of that, again, is public safety. So and the primary driver of that, again, is public safety and justice, the expansion in the jail. So as long as those things remain in the forecast, the opt-outs will most likely need to continue to increase.
And then just going to follow up with that and kind of the same line of thinking, it appears that we're using about seventy-five percent of our opt-out capacity. We also kind of keep that same trajectory in the future, more or less, or?
Correct, so we did have a Financial Action Network group that was put together about two years ago, I believe. And their industry leaders, business leaders within our community, within our county. And their recommendation is to consider passing smaller opt-outs annually and then layering them in in a consistent manner. What we don't want to do is delay opt-out so long that you have a six, seven million dollar opt-out that you have to levy at one time where you have spikes in property taxes. So our hope is smaller opt-outs every year. And then also their other recommendation is to pursue the opt-out before it's dire. Because at the point that we need it to, you know, take, have a, maybe pursue that at least a year in advance so that it's available for when you need it. Historically, this commission has not levied it until it was needed, that they want to be conservative in how we levy it. And you can see we still have opt-out capacity on an opt-out that was passed in twenty nineteen, where we've not taken it all at this point.
Great, thank you.
Susan, based on kind of what our precedence has been as a commission trying to budget to a eight percent cash applied. I mean, we, if we wanted to budget to a nine percent instead of a twelve percent cash applied, not spend down the money in our reserves, which I personally think we do need to spend on the reserves. But the other tool would be to levy that opt-outs that are available so that we can keep our cash applied at nine percent, correct? I mean, that would be an option is, you know, levy so that we don't have to dip into our cash. But we're sitting on more cash than I think what we should be at this point. And I think it's prudent for us to spend that down versus to budget to nine percent using it.
Right, and that's what we've done in the forecast. And I'd love to tell you that my forecast will be exactly right next five years. But we do know that there will be variances to that either in inflation, growth, position needs, et cetera. But we do know that they'll, it'll adjust. What we have done in the forecast is over from twenty-six through twenty thirty-one is using varying levels of cash applied to spend that down. At the same time, we are levying opt-out to, again, try to balance that as carefully as we can because we don't want to get to spending down reserves where you see this number, this line drop very steeply down. And then the next year, we have to vary the opt-out line, which is a screen line, very, take this levied opt-out and go very steeply up. So we want to have it be of a more gradual both ways, have the cash go down gradually and this line going up gradually. Otherwise, what will happen is if you wait till you absolutely need the opt-out as far as spending down the reserves, if you spend them down to that twenty-five percent, this green line will see a spike.
Or spend them down to ten percent or what, I mean, to a dangerous level.
Correct, correct.
Other comments, questions on opt-outs and levies? All right.
So the next slide, we did share this last week and we just thought it would be prudent to share again. With the current budget, and again, I'll walk through this just since I know we have some new people in the room or maybe listening. This is the county's major funds for services that impact all taxpayers within the county, the general fund, the building fund and the bond redemption. So property taxes in those three funds are about seventy-seven point three million dollars for twenty twenty-six budget. Currently, our abstract values, the property values are at just over twenty-six point three billion dollars in value, which last year we were at twenty-five point one billion in value. So those two numbers go into the levy calculation. So the levy calculation for those three funds are two point nine three five per one thousand dollars in value. So that is a slight decrease from the prior year. And so the question always is what does that look like for a taxpayer? What would that increase be for a homeowner? So what we did for, to see what that impact would, could be, is we took a home that was in three hundred thousand in twenty twenty-five. The average market value increase for a home in Minnehaw County was about a four point eight percent market value change. So we increased that three hundred thousand dollar home by that four point eight percent. So now that home value is three hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars. So for that home in twenty twenty-six, with the levy is going down to two point nine three five, that individual for these three funds would see about a thirty, not quite a thirty-two dollar increase in their property taxes related to our budget. This is subject to change. We are waiting for utility values and things that don't come from the state until later this summer. So this, these numbers will change slightly before we get done, but this gives you a generally a pretty good idea of where the levies might be for these three funds as we get to final budget. And then last thing on levies is just again, a historical side on our, where our levies have been since twenty twenty. They do continue to go down as we go through, from twenty twenty through preliminary twenty twenty-six. Within a couple of the funds, you've seen some increases. Twenty twenty-four, you saw an increase in bond redemption. That's related to the Juvenile Justice Center bonds. And then again, in twenty twenty-one, there was an increase related to the jail, the jail expansion project and those bonds.
Question on the rates, on the levy rates? I think we had a conversation where we were trying to compare this statewide, like where our county kind of ranks with around a three dollar per thousand of value. And it's hard to get up-to-date information from, from the state. But I think it was in twenty twenty-two, our rate of around three dollars per thousand put us somewhere in the middle of the pack. Is that, is that fair to say that we're not the lowest tax county or the highest tax county by any means?
Last time I looked at the numbers, we were generally in the middle. And we were not higher, not on the high end and we weren't on the low end, we were pretty much in the middle. I have not looked at it though for.
I just think those are good points of reference. I mean, part of it is the accidents of history of where we were in the nineteen nineties when we had the Janklow property tax freeze. And then counties were kind of frozen at that rate and then have had to opt-out and make adjustments since. But I think for our friends in the legislature that are looking at Minnehaw County and our proportion of opt-out, but also looking at our levy rate is reasonable and towards the median of the state. So more of a comment than a question, but thanks, Susan.
That levy includes the opt-outs, correct?
Correct, correct, yep. We did share this slide last time as well, just the forecasted opt-outs that are in that forecast slide that you saw. We did update this. There were some changes out here in twenty thirty, so as we discussed before, this top section is what I show in the forecast as being levied. So what you can see here, nothing is being proposed to be levied in twenty twenty-six, but starting in twenty twenty-seven, we do see consistent opt-outs as we move forward. So we have that one million, six twenty-five dropping off. And then what we would currently in the forecast show about a two point nine million dollar opt-out being levied. So roughly about a one point three million dollar opt-out increase. And then as you move forward, again, trying to be, have that levied amount be consistent as we move forward and trying to maintain that unassigned fund balance over that twenty-five percent threshold. And then what you see down here is that opt-out capacity where currently we have a proposed consideration, a new opt-out for twenty-six. Again, not being proposed to be levied, but passing that opt-out. And then again, as you move through this, you'd be levying opt-out, which removes it from your capacity, but you'd be also passing new opt-out for consideration. Trying, trying to keep that capacity a little bit ahead as you need that.
And again, it's just a projection and until we get to the next year's budget cycle, we won't really have a clear idea.
We won't know. So we do have in our forecast a conservative growth number. So we do have growth between two and a half to two point seven percent in our forecast. That was more conservative than where we were probably a year ago because of the passage of SB two sixteen. Growth numbers can change, so if it's higher than, if it's closer to three percent, that will decrease your opt-out needs. And so we have UC three expansion in there at different points in three different phases. If our jail leadership is able to push that out longer, then that changes it as well. So there's a lot of moving parts. This is just, helps us have a roadmap of where we could be heading so that we can prepare.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question on this one?
Please.
Susan, can you remind me, it looks like we're, again, forecasting so many variables, but our best guess is that we're going to continue through those future years with around two point two or two million opt-out levied. That keeps our capacity as we can continue around five million. Where did we come up with that five million?
It's not set in stone. I mean, that's something that you as commissioners can decide how much capacity you want to keep. The one thing I would just remind you is we've talked a lot about this opt-out dropping off, but there is one in a couple of years after this, that's four million dollars. So and the next opt-out that'll drop off will drop off in twenty thirty-three and that's a four million dollar opt-out. So you don't see this here, but down the road, there'll be a need for discussion of possibly replacing that. And as we talk about, we talked about the building fund opt-out, how it's dropping off and we're not replacing it. And that's due to it being tied to a debt service that's going away. These are all operating opt-outs to help fund public safety and those needs have not gone down. So that is why most likely we'll need, as a commission, who's ever on the commission at that time, will have to consider replacing that opt-out. And at this point, we don't see that changing, but twenty thirty-three is quite a ways away. But it'll probably be quicker than we know before it'll be here. But that is what's a few years after what you see on this slide.
Okay, so that forecast capacity is kind of buffering right now, anticipating something in twenty thirty-three?
Correct, and then you as a commission decided that, you know, you don't want that much capacity, then what we would do is consider allowing, you know, not delaying opt-out approval for one year. Those are things that you as a commission can make decisions on what you're comfortable with.
Thank you.
It's kind of a comment mixed in with a question. It appears to me that maybe perhaps the philosophy about opt-outs has changed over time. What I mean by that is in twenty twelve, it took out a four million, two thousand and fifteen, a three point five million, and then a big one in two thousand and nineteen, the six point five million opt-out. And it seems to me we've kind of moved, we're looking at in the future as we forecast, taking much smaller opt-outs on a more consistent basis.
Correct, and that was a recommendation of the Fan Committee is to do smaller opt-outs annually versus one large opt-out that you pass in twenty nineteen that might take you six years to use. Just do smaller opt-outs annually. And that way you have the ability to maybe adjust as necessary and maybe adjust your focus and your needs as you go forward.
Yeah, I'll just comment, I've got the Fan Study right in front of me and I have read through it a number of times. But in recommendation three, it notes that incremental opt-out requests creates predictability for taxpayers. And I think that that's been mentioned and I would agree with that. And then further, an incremental approach places accountability on the county to annually monitor whether there's a need for an additional opt-out. I think it's good to reflect every single year and see what our future needs are and take bites out of it as need be.
At last meeting, Commissioner Blumberg asked how our opt-out forecast compares to last year where we were at this time. So this top section is where we are at now, we're on the previous slide. This is where we were at last year during, during the budget cycle. What you can see is that we are actually in a much stronger place from a position to not need as much opt-out as we go forward. So when you get out to twenty thirty-one versus currently versus what was forecasted last year, we're at about a seven million dollar decrease in opt-out need. And there's three primary things that are driving that. First and foremost, it's the UC three expansion. We've been able to delay that for another year. And with the new approach that the sheriff's department leadership is looking at, is doing a three phased-in approach versus essentially two phases, two phases from before. So that again pushes those costs out longer and having smaller increases when they are done. Secondly, we had such a strong level of reserves for twenty-four, we're using some of those reserves up in these first couple of years. So that's why, again, you're seeing not as much opt-out needed at this time. And then thirdly, we did have a new estimate, a new calculation on step increases that lowered that as well. So those are the three primary drivers for this decrease in the forecast in opt-out needs.
Thank you.
I didn't realize it was so significant, the projection change. So it was a good, good question, Commissioner, and good information to see.
So updated means of finance, we again, won't go through this in detail. This does include everything that was discussed at last meeting and those changes that was, that were previously discussed. As we communicated, they'll have the two more changes for the general fund that will need to be made. So just a slight increase for next week's provisional budget meeting. So going back to the very bottom, back page of this on slide one twenty-six, total revenue for all funds, one twenty-seven, one hundred and twenty-seven million. And then total appropriations of a hundred and thirty-two point seven million.
All right.
Okay, any questions there? That is, unless there's, for our next meeting, will be next Tuesday during regular commission meeting, will be our motion to just file the provisional budget in the Auditor's Office. And at that time, then we will begin publication of that as well.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Our past budget hearings were hearings and we didn't take public comment during them, but this is on our regular agenda, so we will take public comment on the budget discussion. Again, no action will be taken by the commission until next week, but we do have the opportunity for public comment on this. Anybody want to address the commission on the budget discussion?
I just want to say a couple of things. One is I, I thank you very much for taking a critical look at the budget. My name is Julianne Perrigo-Talkington, I live in Sioux Falls. And I've heard, I work full-time, so it's hard for me to get here every time. But I do feel like this is a pretty important issue, especially since we have a lot of people who are struggling financially in our county.
Julianne, I'm sorry, just set the microphone down, we can hear you fine.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, I'm so sorry. This is very awkward for me, so sorry. So I, I've stated a couple of times that I know quite a few people are having severe financial issues right now. So I do appreciate all the work that you're doing. And I also wanted to say that I know a lot of what you're facing is not your issue. Especially, I just ran the numbers, if you haven't seen them, the numbers on the amount of what I would call crime dumping in the county is pretty significant. We have around ninety percent of the people re-entering here that have committed violent crimes. And then over sixty percent of the entire state re-entry coming back into our county. So I'm not surprised with the numbers that you're seeing in judicial and with law enforcement. And I am talking to people on the legislative side to see if we can't come up with some way of helping you all because it's affecting Minnehaw and Lincoln. I would ask a huge favor, just because people are struggling, there's some things that just look bad, like sending people to conferences or paying for lobbying sorts of fees and that sort of thing for professional societies, paying for the fair. Until it can at least get some people some relief, I think if we could just show, I mean, you guys have been doing some good things because I've been here the last couple of times, but I'm just asking if there's any other. couple of times, but I'm just asking if there's any other things you can do to help people out. I think it would be super well-received. So thank you for what you're doing. We appreciate you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on on our agenda, then. It's a consider, a motion to approve a $1.5 million opt-out resolution. Susan?
Yes, Susan Beeman with the auditor's office. Before you today, we are asking your consideration to approve a one and a half million dollar opt-out resolution. As discussed, the Financial Action Network had recommended pursuing passage of opt-outs while we currently still have capacity. We do have opt-outs in our forecast, as we've discussed at length. The primary reason for these opt-out needs, and as we've discussed, is public safety and justice-related costs. Just, those public safety and justice-related costs do make up 71% of our general fund budget for 2026. What's also very interesting is from 2021 to the 2026 budget, those costs have gone up 50%. So that actual number of what those costs have gone up is just under $23 million in the last five years. So the primary driver of these opt-out needs remain, has been, and continues to be, public safety and justice-related costs. So we do have before you today a resolution asking you for your consideration on a resolution for opt-out for a million and a half dollars. That opt-out would be for 25 years, which will be through taxes payable in 2050. We do not plan to levy this immediately. We do anticipate needing to levy this, this one, in 2028.
So just to be clear, the immediate impact to the taxpayer is zero?
Correct. We do not plan to levy this opt-out or any opt-out at this time for the '26 budget year, but we do anticipate needing it in 2028, at least a portion of this opt-out in 2028.
All right. At this point, we take public comment on this proposed opt-out. Anybody like to address the commission on the proposed $1.5 million opt-out?
I don't like to be the only one talking, but the school board is also doing an opt-out. People are becoming pretty aware about the total amount of the opt-outs. It's hundreds of millions over the life of the opt-out. People are under financial stress. And if you get people who they only have 20 days and they're out, standing on corners trying to get signatures, I just think it looks bad. If there's any way you can wait, and we can try to get some relief on these, I think it might be more popular.
All right. No additional public comment. I'll turn it over to the commission for discussion and/or action.
Well, Mr. Chair, I can lead us off. I appreciate the public comment. I think it's well-directed to our friends in the state legislature, because if we show them our five-year forecasts, there's no mathematical way to do this without a line going up. We can debate the slope of that line and the pace of that growth. I think we have some prudential judgment. Do we spend down reserves a little bit faster or a little bit slower? But the general course of the line is what it is, barring other revenue. So if the state legislature wants to get serious about other forms of revenue and says property taxes we want to decrease, if they can replace that revenue, then we can make that exchange. But without that guidance from the legislature to this point, this is the trajectory we're on, more or less. And so I think 1.5 million largely just replaces an opt-out that's going to fall off of about 1.6 million next year. So again, I think we're following all the guidance of our Fan Committee to stay one year ahead of needs. So I think this is basically the fruition of a mathematical formula. There's not a lot of discretion to go backwards on this. It's just the pace of how we go forward. So I'll be supportive of this as just a, something we have to do. I think the legislature likes framing it as opt-out, as in optional, but I don't see our public safety and justice as optional. So I think this, these are operating expenses that are just what we have to do each year. So that's my outlook on it.
Commissioner Isie?
Mr. Chair, I would tend to agree with Commissioner Kipley on this. And the reality is, 25% of our general fund are opt-outs. And, you know, given the level of services that we provide, and the essential services really, that projected, that projection is going to continue to increase. And it's just a question of how much that slope increases over time. And I see this opt-out as simply a way to maintain and upkeep the operations of the county, but then secondly, as a replacement for the opt-out that's expiring next year. I did have a question for Susan, if she would like to come back up. Maybe for the benefit of the public, you can explain how these opt-outs operate, the number of years that they're in force, the fact that they don't need to be levied, and that, say, we do hypothetically get financial assistance from the state. We don't need to levy, or in other words, tax the public, though the opt-out exists.
Correct. I'll just go back a few slides to that opt-out slide. So when you get into, the fact that we pass the opt-out does not require us to levy it. So, and that's very evident from that 2019 opt-out, that we still have not levied all of it. And so you don't build up extra capacity just by not levying it one year. The max you can levy is what the commission approved of that, of the number, in that case, 6.5 million. If down the road, the legislators approve an additional revenue stream for the county, then US commissioners could direct us to not levy that opt-out if necessary. So that is something that we can evaluate every year, whether or not the funding cycle has changed. What we have consistently seen is our other revenue streams remain fairly flat, or fairly, very small increases. So property taxes are the predominant way we fund our budget. I did have the question of, what would it take to not need opt-outs? So the question, if we could never need UC3, that would mean 35 less FTEs by the time it's fully operational. If we could keep all of our other FTEs flat, that would help greatly. But I know we have our chief deputy of the Sheriff's Department in the room. I don't think, from a realistic perspective, that never needing that floor in the jail is realistic.
Well, it's to convince people to stop committing crimes.
Yeah. So, but yeah, we don't need to levy it. So if down the road, the makeup of the funding of counties changes, where maybe our needs are not as great, then the future opt-outs would obviously decrease. And if it, there's enough revenue that we don't need all the ones that have been currently levied, then we could have that discussion with you as commissioners, and you could provide that direction.
Yeah. We're not going to be levying or taxing the public this opt-out until maybe 2028.
But that is what our current-
If the need exists.
Correct. I mean, currently, what we would see is the existing opt-outs being adequate for next year, but this opt-out would be partially needed in 2028, assuming the forecast holds true. But there's a lot of variables with that, like UC3 timing, if UC3 timing of growth, and the amount of growth that we would get in the funding for property tax formula.
Thank you. I'm going to, a few comments that are kind of a history lesson, as well as my justification for supporting this opt-out, because back in 1994, I think, is when we were given our levy that we use. Every county was told, you know, tell the state what you need, and then they set the levies for everybody. And they're all different across the state. And every time we went to the legislature saying, hey, you need to fix this, their response has been, "Opt-out. We gave you that ability." And that's what we have heard for decades now, our legislators saying, "You can opt-out." So that's what we do. And it's amazing that, you know, when they talk about property tax reform, they always want to look at the property values, which are driven by the market, our, you know, capital society, and, you know, prices are what prices are, but they don't want to look at the tax. They just want to look at the valuation. So opt-outs are what we have left, really, not what we have left is our only option to assure public safety and make sure that the citizens of our county receive what they expect from their county government. So I am supportive of this opt-out. And again, it's the only tool that we have to make sure that we can assure that public safety. So, other comments or motion?
I will just make a couple of short comments, because everybody is, I'm on the same page as everybody else is. It's a little frustrating, because Commissioner Karski's right. Every time we go to the legislature, all they ever tell us is, "Opt-out, opt-out." And they've been doing that for as long as I can remember, and have been attending legislative sessions. The other thing that's a little crazy with this quote formula that they came up with, and if you ask them how they came up with it, you really don't get an explanation. But 91% of what the county's required to do is required by state legislation and statutes. 71% is public safety. Unless somebody wants to adopt a prisoner, when we fill up the jail, that we're really close to doing currently, we have no options. And the only way that things are going to change is that they come up with a solution at the legislative session. It's not going to be the legislative's responsibility, or the states, or the counties to tax nonprofits. That's a federal problem, not our problem. We have nothing to do with that. It's just, people need to understand that the county's in a situation where we're required to do everything that we do, and the only real source of revenue that we have are property taxes and fees. So that needs to be part of the solution, not tell us that we just need to cut stuff. Because what we're trying to cut, as people don't understand, is what we are required to do by the legislature, and I'm not blaming yous, and so I'm, that's the only reason I'm looking at you. You give us accurate numbers every year. I think it's frustrating. People that understand accounting and finance just shake their head when we give them the formulas, tell them what the situation is, and tell them our options. And I think people need to understand that, rather than just complain about what we have to, what we're required to do. So that's the end of my sermon.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bleiberg.
Thank you. I also will be brief. I would be in agreement with my colleagues. And I'd just like to mention that my favorite slide from this presentation that you had on the previous agenda item is the property tax levy estimates, where mathematically, my brain just loves the A times B equals C. And to Commissioner Benega's point, the values, the property values that people complain about don't really have that big of an impact on the actual amount that we are charged, just when you look at how the process works. And so I just want to make a point of emphasizing how we have been working on budgets with all of our liaison departments over the last several months, trying to make sure that we're not bringing anything extra or anything unnecessary to the table, because really, the budget is what's going to control. And I just, I applaud all of the departments and the department heads and the employees who work hard every day to try to find efficiencies and creative solutions to the growing responsibilities that we have with the increase in public safety needs that's just outweighing sometimes our capacity as staff and departments. So I just, there's so much that goes into this point that we're at today. And I think, I appreciate the work of the Fan Committee that allows us to have some confidence in the recommendations that our auditor's office has already been doing a great job of guiding us with. So I would also be in agreement.
Still need a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion is second for the discussion. Call the roll, please.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Isie?
Aye.
Bleiberg?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Well, Commissioner Benega, in 2050, you'll still have this money available when you're in the commission.
I'll be finding Jeff Barth, and we'll be renewing liquor licenses.
All righty. We're now at the opportunity for public comment. Would anybody like to address the commission on any non-agenda item? We have five minutes, and we allow for a total of 30 minutes.
Good morning. Deanne Kipley, Minnehaw County. I just wanted to offer my congratulations and directed, especially to Susan Beeman, as well as to the entire auditor's office, for putting together this budget and what you did today. I also want to commend the Fan, Financial Action Network, that this county, and I believe Chair Karski started that a few years ago, but the school district's been using it. Lincoln County has implemented now. And you're looking, really, what you're asking as far as for some changes at the state level. And I think that's imperative as far as to happen, because now we have governor candidates that want to slash property taxes, and that's really the only way that you guys have to fund, the necessary funding that takes place. And when we have a sitting commissioner endorsing a candidate that wants to slash your only revenue source, I really think that everyone needs to look in the mirror and say, who are your real constituents? And what we're trying to do here to have public safety, to provide all the resources that the county constituents expect, I just think that that really need to take a hard look at where you're going to be moving forward. So in the future, you really need to go back to your department heads and say, what are we going to do if property taxes do get slashed, and we have no revenue? What are you going to do then? So I think those are the hard questions you've got to look at moving forward. Thank you.
My name is Greg Bosick, Minnehaw County, here in Sioux Falls. I would just like to say some things that, you know, there's guys like me out here. We're trying to, you know, form and register a foundation with the state. By doing so, we're going to be able to help to advocate and work with some of this recidivism. I was a big culprit in that, and a lot of it isn't guys like my fault. It's just circumstantial, as a lot of these things are. And it's, kind of, we're failing our own people in a big way in our rehabilitation. And so, you know, any way that I can continue to come and work with you guys, and we can kind of communicate and advocate for each other, that's our plan. So we're real close. We just got to get board members. That's harder than you would think, you know, with the people that are responsible and passionate about it. So, yeah, that's pretty much all I've got to say, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And make sure, if you spoke, that we do need your signature, your information for the record, so please sign in. Is that okay? Okay. Get reminded of that frequently. Any other public comment? Please.
way over to this gentleman?
Yeah.
One for each of them?
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. The packet you received is in regards to a birth certificate, okay? You're going to see an outline precisely what it is that I'm talking about here, okay? final clarification of slander and libel. I hereby reject-
Did we get your name, sir? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Did we get your name?
Oh, yes. Douglas G. Family of Anderson.
Thank you.
I hereby reject and deny any association with the so-called sovereign citizen movement, no such thing, that is a government-created term meant to defame and discredit free men and women who stand on their unalienable rights. I am not a sovereign citizen. I'm a private American, a beneficiary of the public trust and a living man under divine and natural law. Any attempt to refer me as a sovereign citizen is slanderous, libelous, and will trigger contractual penalties for my recorded fee schedule that you have in front of you. Okay? Again, good morning, commissioners. I present this brief but solemn notice, not as a subject or citizen, but as a living man, stewardess, standing in honor and peace. I'm here to correct the public record and rebut false presumptions that have attached to my estate without full disclosure or lawful authority. Historical legal framework, the hidden trust, following the Great Fire of London in 1666, Parliament passed the K. V. Act, which declared that anyone missing at sea or otherwise presumed dead could have their property seized by the state unless proven alive. The presumption of death and loss of legal capacity is still in effect today. The moment the birth certificate is created, the state presumes the baby's lost its seat, dead, dead in law. And thus, the constructed trust is formed with the state as trustee administrator while the living man is unknowingly labeled as the ward or charity of the state. This state, in all caps, is a securitized body that is traded under UCC Commercial Code, especially Article 9, secured transaction. It is fraud, cloaked in silence, relying on our ignorance and presumed consent. Vatican City, City of London, Washington DC. Now, I will tell you that that flag that, that sits in behind you is a maritime admiralty flag, standing in between you and that Vatican representative up on top of the hill. Okay? Three states form an international power structure. The Vatican controls religion and the souls. The city of London controls finance. Washington DC controls the military. So, I'll make this real brief. Every man and woman born on this land is committed as chattel. My correction of the record, I have rebutted the presumption. I have published and recorded my standing as a living man with full rights, capacity, and benefits of title to my estate. I have served lawful notice to the appropriate agencies. I have corrected the false data creativity in, in the birth certificate exposed filed date discrepancy and challenged. States claim constructive ownership over me and my trust because I have people that are stepping in on my trust, my foreign-grantor trust, eh? There's people that are doing that. And I'm going to hold each and every one of you accountable. If you step in between my trust, I will have the IRS breathing down your neck. If you step on my trust, I'm sick and tired of it. My time is up, I see, or close to it. The record now stands corrected. I'm going to leave this right here. That's a statement on the record. And when I'm done, I'm, the oath of office that you guys have, I want it. The S. 61, I want it. And within 10 days, if I don't get it, I, you declared, you tacitly agreed and acquiesced to my statements. And after 10 days, I will record it in Pima County because I'm being gatekeeped here.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Any other public comment? All right. Moving on then to non-action, liaison reports. I know we had several traveling this last week. I don't know if we have time for updates for that yet, but any other liaison reports? Commissioner Benega?
I would just say that Commissioner Blenberg and I myself were able to do a full tour of the Juvenile Justice Center after a meeting that we had with program director. And it was impressive to see the completion and where they're at in that process and look forward to that first phase being totally accomplished.
Occupancy in October, is that close?
I don't want to put him on record at this point because October's still a ways away.
Other liaison reports?
Mr. Chair, the library board met last week with our new library director and new county library board member in attendance. And it was also the last meeting for two outgoing city-appointed board members who have served long terms and will be missed also. We had the Ahab meeting last Wednesday also and had good updates from city, county, and schools. And one of the notes that I made was that the, the housing hub update, they're hoping to have that up and working with the community navigators next summer or fall. So, that will be something to look forward to. And I wasn't able to attend, but there was a community engagement park event last week with good turnout, 150 people roughly attended, and I was told they ran out of food. So, that bill counts, was successful. I think that might be it for me.
Mr. Chair, I'll just note that we had no appeals from the Planning and Zoning Commission from June, so I believe we'll have to update our calendars. But I believe the joint meeting with the city is canceled for July. That would have been next week, July 22nd, but we'll have no joint meeting with the city council this month. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right. I know next Monday, Commissioner Benega and I have a meeting with the Metro Communications. We're no longer, I don't know what we are, but yeah, we're meeting with Metro Communications. We'll be finalizing our budget discussion with them and the management of the 911 and how things are going there. So, more, more next week, I guess. Next Tuesday, we will have our final budget action. And any other non-action commission discussion right now?
Mr. Chair?
Please.
One thing I forgot to mention, the national, let me make sure I get this right, National Conference of State Legislatures has reached out and would like to send some people here. They're actually coming tomorrow to do some planning for a site visit, and then there will be legislators from around the country coming in September. And apparently, the, the aspects of county and city government that they would like to take a look at would be like the Just Home Program, the Avera Behavioral Health, Link, Glory House, Francis House, Safe Home. So, no impact for us locally, but kind of a feather in our cap that state legislators from all across the country will be coming to take a look at what we've been working on here.
Yeah, it is a big deal.
Mm-hmm.
All right. We do have a executive session scheduled, so I'll look for a motion to enter executive session for the purposes of Satco, Carrefour, and Law 1, 25, 2, 1, 3, 4, and 6.
Second?
Motion second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Next door? All right. So, in about 10 minutes, we will convene next door.